I don't really have a lot of...
No, that's super. I really appreciate it.
I've done a lot of subdivisions.
Yeah, no good, yeah.
Like I said, there's nothing better in the world than a home.
It's picking up, huh?
I...
Oh, yeah.
Well, some of them are lukewarm because they're from this morning, but um, when I was driving in, I'm like, oh my god, I smell like feces.
That's where Mike Washam is in Vegas also.
That is an air freshener.
I have one minute to go here.
Challenge parking today, huh?
Pardon?
Challenge parking today.
I parked in food bender parking, then I had to move. I didn't know it was food bender.
Yes. Good morning. Welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission for May 22nd, 2019. Information concerning the following agenda items is available for public consideration during normal working hours at the Resource Management Agency Permit Center, 5961 South Mooney Boulevard, Visalia, California. Staff will assist in answering questions. For further information about the Planning Commission, see the last plate, uh, last page. All public hearings are scheduled for certain times and soon thereafter as the matter can be heard. All non-timed items will be considered following the public hearing, hearings or when time permits. Persons wishing to speak on any of the agenda items who may have a, made a political contribution of more than $250 to any commissioner in the last 12 months must indicate this when speaking. May we have roll call, please?
McAlroy?
Here.
Millies?
Here.
Elliot?
Here.
BS?
Here.
Whitlatch, Commissioner, which, Whitlatch is absent today. Pearson?
Here.
Aguilar is absent as well.
Do you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on to item two, public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak. Any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair, that's me. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And I might note, as a courtesy to all of us in attendance today, if you would please turn off your electronic devices, put them on mute, whatever, and also in compliance with the American, Americans with Disabilities Act, if you have a special need for assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact the Resource Management Agency at 559-624-7000. I'm going to open up the public hearing for comment from the public at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? If not, I'll close the public...
Commissioner Millies, I do have an announcement. Our June 12th meeting?
Yes.
Planning Commission meeting will be held at the Visalia City Hall, the 707 West Asequia address.
The June 7th.
June 12th.
June 12th. So, June 12th, we will not be meeting in this chamber.
Correct.
We will be meeting at the City Hall Chambers in downtown Visalia.
What's the address again, Wilma?
707 West Asequia.
707 West Asequia?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Wilma. Uh, I will close the public hearing at this time if there are no comments, and we will move on to item three, approval of the minutes for May 8th, 2019. May I have a motion, please?
Motion. I motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Roll call.
McAlroy?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Well moved. Moving on to item four, public hearing. Item 4A, special use permit PSP 19-010 and PSP 19-011, Delta Liquid Energy, Dorn's Gas Incorporated. Site number one, categorical exemption and special use permit on PSP 19-010 to allow the installation of 130,000 gallon propane tank on a one acre portion of a 144.46 acre parcel in the AE40 Exclusive Agriculture 40 acre Minimum Zone. And site number two, categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP 19-011 to allow the installation of 130,000 gallon propane tank on a one acre portion of a 148.63 acre parcel in the AE40 Exclusive Agriculture 40 acre Minimum Zone. Site number one is located on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Route 63 and Avenue 384, south of Cutler, Arosi, and site number two is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of State Route 63 and Avenue 384, south of Cutler, Arosi. And our contact this morning is Ms. Dana Metlin.
Thank you.
Morning Dana.
Furman Millies?
Ms. Millies.
Uh, as you mentioned, this request is for two propane tanks for above-ground storage of flammable liquids, and the applicant is Delta Liquid Energy, and their representative is Randy Smith for Dorn's Gas. The location of these tanks is two adjacent parcels on the south side of Avenue 384 and on the east and west sides of SR63, and they are south of the community of Cutler, Arosi. These are the hearing notification maps. These projects were noticed according to the law, published in the Visalia Times-Delta on May 10, 2019, and mailed to each property owner within 300 feet. Staff has not received any comments regarding the projects. Entitlement is found in Section 16, Part 2B of Ordinance Number 352, the zoning ordinance, flammable liquids stored above ground whereby, for all contiguous ownership, the maximum aggregate above-ground storage of flammable fuel shall not exceed 10,000 gallons unless a special use permit is first approved. The environmental determination for these projects is a categorical exemption from SEQA pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and these projects are compatible with this exemption because the propane tanks are considered accessory to the existing agricultural operations. These projects are located in the Rural Valley Lands Plan, and their land use designation is Valley Agriculture, and the project is consistent with these applicable general plan These are the vicinity maps showing the location being at the intersection of SR63 and Avenue This is the existing zoning maps, Exclusive Agriculture, 40 acre Minimum. The surrounding properties are zoned Exclusive Agriculture. Aerial photographs of the project sites, and both parcels have been recently planted in citrus, and the parcel on the east side of SR63 contains solar panels to power the water well. These are the site plans, and the tanks will be in the middle of these here, and this is not working very well, but anyhow, they're in the center of these lots, parcels. These two parcels are adjacent to one another, they have common ownership, and are divided by State Route 63. The proposal is to install 130,000 gallon propane storage tank on a one acre portion of each parcel, and the propane would be utilized for the operation of wind machines during winter frost periods, and the nearest residences are greater than 1,300 feet from the location of the tanks. And that concludes staff's presentation, and the recommendation is approval of the categorical exemptions and the projects, and we'll need two separate motions.
I have questions. How far are the tanks from the nearest residence? Can you repeat?
1,300 feet is the nearest residence, and I believe that was the parcel on the west side.
Um, and was there a need or has fire provided?
Comments?
Comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Several of these, and these people do a good job.
Right. This is a public hearing, and at this time, I will open the session to the public for comment on this project and application. Are there any members of the public that would like to come up and speak? If so, please state your name and address.
Randy Smith, 2953 Moody Avenue, Clovis, California, 93619. Didn't want to specifically address this project, but we had talked prior about nine or 10 of each other projects where we hadn't had protection, protective ballards in place. We had fencing, working with area, and I've gone back to wonderful, and we have those approved, and we're about halfway done with the protection ballards on those other projects that we had discussed. So we'll be done with those other ones about July. So I just wanted to inform the commission on that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on permits? Not, I'll close the testimony to the public at this time, and look for any further discussion and/or motion from my fellow commissioners.
I...
There's two motions here.
Yeah. Like I said, we've, we've done many for this, this outfit here, and they've done, they do a good job, and in fact, we see that they're even moving forward to get, do even a better job here. So, you know, having said that, then I will make a motion to, the first motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Sections 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved special use permit PSP 19-010.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
McAlroy?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Now also, make a motion, the second motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14 California Code Regulations, Sections 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approved special use permit PSP 19-011.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
McAlroy?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Well moved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Both motions are approved. Moving on to item 4B, special use permit number PSP 18-106 and zone variance number PZV 18-020, Rainbow Orchards. This is a categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP 18-106 to allow a solid waste recycling facility, commercial composting of dairy and pistachio hulls slash green waste on a 30 acre portion of an 80 acre parcel in the AE40 Exclusive Agriculture 40 acre Minimum Zone, and categorical exemption and zone variance on PZV 18-020 to allow an eight-foot tall fence on a 40 acre portion of an 80 acre parcel in the AE40 Exclusive Agriculture 40 acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Road 184 and Avenue 84, east of Pixley, and again, our contact this morning is Ms. Dana Metlin.
Thank you.
Morning.
And good morning again. As mentioned, the request is for a special use permit to allow the commercial composting of green waste, pistachio hulls, and dairy manure. The project includes a zone variance to allow an eight-foot high fence, a portion of which is inside the front yard setback area. The applicant is Rainbow Orchards, and this is Seton Pistachio. The site is located east of Pixley at the southeast corner of Road 184, Avenue 80. This is the hearing notification map. This project was noticed according to the law in the Visalia Times-Delta on May 10, 2019, and to all property owners within 300 feet. Staff has received a letter in opposition to the proposal and a phone call from a concerned neighbor as well, and you've just received a letter, a copy of that letter, and a representative, writer of that letter is also here to give testimony. Environmental determination for this project is a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the state SEQA guidelines pertaining to Section 156061B3, the common sense rule, and Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities. The applicant will be required to comply with existing rules and regulations of the San Joaquin Valley Unified Air Pollution Control District and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. The proposal is compatible with this exemption because the proposed project is consistent with existing zoning, is located within the applicant's existing agricultural facility, and does not require the construction or alteration of existing structures or utilities. Furthermore, the proposed activity will have a benefit as it will provide the applicant and growers with valuable soil amendment and reduce the amount of waste in county Entitlement is found in Section 162B of Ordinance 352 pertaining to special use permits whereby solid waste recycling operations are allowed in the AE40 zone if a special use permit is first secured, and entitlement is also found in Section 161, which authorizes the filing of variance applications when practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with this ordinance result through strict and literal interpretation and enforcement of the provisions thereof. The project is located in the Rural Valley Lands Plan, and the land use designation is Valley Agriculture, and the proposal is consistent with these relevant general plan policies. This is the vicinity map. Mentioned, the project is located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Avenue 84 and Road 184, and you know, this is just an aerial to show the location between Pixley and Terabella. It's, and you know, the mouse isn't working properly, but it is there in the center of the screen. And this is the aerial photograph. And a more recent view from Google Earth to just indicate that this composting facility is already existing on this parcel, and on the east side is a water facility that was approved in 2017 with a special use permit. And again, this is for Seton Pistachio. This is the existing zoning map, and the site is zoned AE40, and the surrounding parcels are all zoned Exclusive Agriculture, AE40 to the north and west and south, and AE20 to the east, and there are orchards to the east and south, and grapes on the north and west sides of this parcel. Site plan. The project is a composting facility of organic materials. The compost pile utilizes a proper ratio of carbon-rich materials and nitrogen-rich materials. Leaves, clippings, branches, and shell are ground up and mixed with the hull and manure at a four-to-one ratio. The source of the manure will come from CAF Tech Corporation located at 13939, Road 152 in Tipton, and soil samples show that the manure contains large amounts of both nitrogen and beneficial microbes free from dangerous pathogens, and this compost will be applied to Seton Pistachio Orchards as a soil amendment and will not be sold commercially. The project also includes a zone variance to allow an eight-foot high fence, which is higher than the six feet allowed, and to allow that fence within the 25-foot front yard setback area of the AE40 zone. There are mandatory findings for a zone variance. They are, one, that there are special circumstances applicable to the property, two, that the variance will be conditioned so that it is not a grant of special privilege, three, that the variance will not authorize an activity that is not otherwise expressly authorized in the AE40 zone district, and four, that the granting of the variance is... and staff has made the appropriate findings to allow the approval of the zone variance. And that concludes staff's presentation, and our recommendation is approval of the project, the special use permit, and the zone variance, and again, these are two separate motions.
I have a question.
Certainly.
And it's a little bit of, I'm needing a little bit of education on the term, but can you explain what special privilege in this context means?
Special privilege means?
What would be granting special privilege and what would not be granting? If you can give me an example.
The granting of the special privilege is allowing the eight-foot high fence, and we have allowed eight-foot high fences throughout the county, so in that context, it would not be a special privilege, and it also is encroaching into the front yard setback area, and so, again, you know, that has occurred frequently in this county, and they have been approved for variances in that regard.
So this letter dated May 20th from an attorney on behalf of, this is Kovacevic, is that the way he pronounces? Farms? Has staff seen this letter?
Uh, yes, it is, uh, we've seen that, uh...
Any comments on it?
Um, we can't respond, like, respond later to the comments on it, uh, as far as, I'd like to hear the testimony, so we can have a better, better answer to questions that are raised by the commission as they hear the testimony.
Okay. Any other comments?
Not yet, not till I hear your testimony.
Okay, all right. This is a public hearing, and I will open the testimony to the public at this time on this particular permit. If any members of the public would like to come up and speak on behalf of this application, please do so at this time. Are there any members? Yes? Please state your name and address.
Yes, good morning, members of the Planning Commission. I'm David Leith. I'm the author of that letter. I am the attorney for Kovac, Kovakovitch Five Farms. They are the table grape farmers who are directly west of this project. My, my address is set forth in my letter. I'm in Fresno. I'm not going to repeat what I've already set forth in the letter, I just want to emphasize to the commission that the concerns of my client are the manure dust landing onto table grapes, rendering them unmarketable. This has been an ongoing problem since approximately October of 2017, as the Google Earth image shown by Ms. Metlin, clearly, there it is, indicates that this is an ongoing operation, and we've had problems in 2018 as well with the manure dust. In addition to the manure dust, we've also encountered problems with abnormally high fly populations and the fly speck, which once the flies land on the table grapes, that speck creates contamination, and it is not acceptable with the marketers and sellers of the, basically the consumers of the table grapes, and we've presented our concerns to the people at Seton over the last approximately year and a half. We've had meetings with them, but we have been unable to reach any sort of an agreement as to what should happen. So I just wanted to emphasize, finally, that even with the potential protections of a fence, there is still traffic of the trucks hauling the material in and out. That material that is being hauled in is in fact the manure, raw manure, before it is incorporated into the pistachio and tree trimmings, and, and so, that, that is a, a large concern of ours as well, as with the dust and all the material that can escape from these, this higher volume of truck traffic. Finally, just wanted to, on behalf of my clients, just emphasize that they want to be good neighbors, they don't want to create problems, but at the same time, their farming operation has been severely and directly impacted by this composting operation. We believe that maybe the planning of this from the, from the farming standpoint of Seton was wrong to begin with. If the lagoon had been placed on the west side of this property and the composting on the east side of the property, then the composting would have been surrounded by trees as opposed to directly adjacent to table grapes. The trees are not affected by the manure in the dust because they are a closed shell. Unfortunately, they are just within feet of table grapes that are intended for human consumption, and manure dust is just not acceptable. So, any questions I can answer?
How far is the, this operation from the vineyard?
Directly across the street, within feet.
That's right.
The vineyard is the, the long, narrow parcel right, right there.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the vineyard operation that is directly west of those composting piles in that Google Earth image.
And you've had meetings with Seton and no agreement. What, what was, what was the disagreement on the part of the Seton folks?
Their, their belief is that the manure dust isn't significant enough of a problem to our table grapes.
Bring evidence of that.
Of the meeting?
Yes.
Yes, I have brought a packet which had some background information that wasn't in the letter that I sent over, and I believe in tab, tab three is the original letter from Seton, November 1st of 2017, and then a couple of my letters to them, setting up the meeting, and then the final letter from their attorneys, Manager Joan Helsley up in Fresno, dated July 3rd of 2018, basically telling us that they did not believe they were causing us any problems.
How much of your client's property is affected?
We've, we've have at least approximately, that, that entire block there that is adjacent that runs, again, looking at the Google Earth image, from the north corner of Road, or Avenue 84 and Road 184, that north, that would be our northeast corner, all the way down to approximately south of our own holding pond. If it go, kind of, Dana, up from there, you see our holding pond? Yeah. So, so all of that area that is basically directly west is where we've had the greatest impact. We were unable to harvest any grapes from that area in 2017, and in 2018, we had to, because of the ongoing problem, we had to divert what would have been table grapes to juice instead, and here we are still in 2019 without any resolution of this issue.
Were there any solutions offered at your meeting with Seton as far as what they could do?
You know, we, we had a good informal meeting with them, and then, and then we thought we were making progress, and then they hired their attorney in Fresno, and communication with them ended at that point in time. So no, we were unable to reach any sort of resolution. You know, it's difficult because table grapes are not washed before they're sent to the consumer, they're field-packed, you can't wash them because introduction of water at that point in time would create rot and mold within the packing itself, and so we, that's why we diverted them. rot and mold within the packing itself, and so, we, that's why we diverted them to juice in 2018. But no, we, we've been unable to reach any sort of a informal resolution with them, which is why we're here today to, to voice our concerns.
Is, tell me if that's not an appropriate question, but is there a difference in economic impact between juice and table grapes?
Yes, yeah, there's a premium associated with table grapes that are sold as fresh-market table grapes as opposed to juice, which is a inferior price point and kind of a last-ditch effort just to get some economic benefit from the crop.
Were you able to demonstrate the, the level of financial damages that were incurred with to Seton?
Yes, yeah, we, we have, we've been working with an agronomist, a consultant. He has gone out and done an inspection in both 2017 and 2018, and we ballpark estimate the losses that we've had, total over $200,000. No lawsuit has been filed. Our, my client, again, my client wants to emphasize, they want to be good neighbors here, they want to try to work it out, and so, we, you know, we, we...
They've said they want to work it out?
No, my clients do.
Oh, your, your client.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, my clients do, and, which is why I'm here to, to hopefully get some...
What's your client's recommendation?
Well, my client's recommendation would be for them to, to not perform the composting where they're currently doing it, perhaps relocate that to the other side of the, the pond, or, you know, this, you know, Seton's holding, water holding tank, basically to...
Where would that be on that map if you said it was relocated?
That would have to be, that would have to be directly east of the approximately...
Do they own that property also?
Yes, that's our understanding.
I'm looking at the Wagner or Winger...
Yes.
Stone's letter from July 3rd, 2018.
Yes.
Second page, it says, "I understand Seton has ordered and will be planting trees along the perimeter," and then Seton plans on oiling, and then it mentions an eight-foot fence. Will that mitigate the issue, or will that not mitigate?
We do not believe it will, and these are the reasons why. Number one, it's going to take a long time for those trees to grow tall enough to be any sort of a physical barrier to the dust. Number two is the height of the manure and composting windrows is greater than eight feet. So, if you stand at street level, even with an eight-foot fence, which I believe has already been installed, there is a fence out there, I don't know if it's the eight-foot or maybe a seven-foot, but if you stand at street level, you can see the height of these composting windrows above the, the fence. So, as winds blow, there, there isn't a physical barrier that's being suggested by Seton's counsel that, in our minds, would be satisfactory. The oiling of the roads can somewhat perhaps cut down on the dust that's generated by the additional trucks from the ground level, but it doesn't address the manure that's being hauled in, and these are uncovered trailers, as I have shown a couple photos of that in exhibit tab five. Those are the last couple of photos, and you can see, if you just look at the very last photo, you can see that both the height of the truck and the manure composting that's above the, above the, the height of the, of the, of the load and the back of the truck itself are both clearly above the fence level. Finally, even with potential physical barriers such as the trees, which would eventually grow in an eight-foot fence, we still have the unacceptable rise in fly population and the fly speck problems that have been caused as well with the table grapes.
So, if they moved it over to that other parcel, you think that would mitigate the problem?
We think so.
So, the flies wouldn't come over?
Well, it just creates, it, it creates a little bit further distance between the, the composting and our, and our facility. You know, we, we haven't done our own study to try to fix what we believe is their problem, but we, we're just concerned with what, with what we are currently experiencing.
But your client's been losing approximately $200,000 per year since 2017?
Well, not so, just to clarify, we lost over $100,000 in 2017, and then at least, I believe, that, close to that same amount in 2018.
Where do the trucks come in that go by or give off dust to your client's property?
Yeah, it, it's in tab five there, again, you can see, I, there's photos of the truck, and the ones that we observed when we were out there, we're traveling north-south on what would be Road 184. So, they'd be, they'd be entering, entering, and leaving the composting facility from what is the southwest corner of the composting facility.
So, they, they come straight up and down?
Yep, that was, that's what we observed when we were out there.
So, would they still come straight up and down and then turn?
I'm sorry?
Would they still, I'm saying up and down, but north-south and then turn? Or would they come in on a different road if they moved the facility?
Oh, well, if they moved the composting to the other side of their lagoon, then they could easily, they could easily come in off of road, that's Avenue 84, and then, Dana, if you have the other image, the main thoroughfare, which is just a quarter mile to the east, is kind of the main, the main thoroughfare through there, which is the same street where the Seton Pistachio Processing Facility is located.
This might be more a question for staff, but, and I don't, maybe after testimony or during, I don't know. But, okay, so we have table grapes on one side, but we have other items, agricultural items around that. So, are we kicking the can down the street? Is there something else that could be done as far as covering vehicles? Something to think about.
Through the chair, it says they use permit, so our ability to add conditions are abroad. So, if the commission determines that there are other conditions that are placed upon the covering trucks, they're already oiling, so it's more than most, that we'd be that those conditions to try to remedy further, that the efforts, the risk days are beyond any other agricultural permits we generally deal with. So, we can, again, discuss this after getting the testimony, and how that is better in support.
Questions? Aaron, we had the same complaint and issue on the Shannon feedlot and Tulare.
Harvest power.
Exactly, and so, what did we do? We did some mitigation things there, and now those have probably matured in, in time, have they worked?
And we, that, that was a little bit different in the fact that it was pure manure composting. Again, that was pre-general order by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. So, regulatory, the regulations have changed a little bit and upgraded, so that there are in compliance with those. The point being, as far as the mitigation measures that were required for that project, that was actually previous to the last hearing on harvest power, because they were just expanding. The original ones, mitigation measures were fencing and planting behind them, so they were sure that would be...
Right. Did we, and we had, we mandated some fly abatement, did we not?
Well, the, yes, and to answer that question a little bit better, the Air District, the, the composting regimes, as far as the timing of the oils and the timing of the hours to cook the eggs, and the, now it's at 145 degrees, I believe.
160?
Yeah, it's 160 degrees, and so, that's, that's all that's required by law, and that's as good as we can, can get it, as far as if there's, to differentiate this from a regular dairy or somebody else who's composting purely manure, would be tough in this situation. I mean, just because they have a special need, doesn't necessarily say that the regulate, regulations that are in place right now don't meet the requirements of our zoning code. So, we did, there was no above four requirements for harvest power as far as the flies. We use the Air District's requirements on the sign. They will do all the other requirements as far as other impact management plans as required by the Air District and the Regional Water Quality Control Board to, to mitigate the flies. Again, dealing with this over and over again, composting-wise, above the Air District standards, there are other applications that could be used, as we've talked about in the loss, and other, other things that could help in that process, but I don't think it would say to the level that is, uh, just an opposition of the project providing. So, I think there are regulations as they are with the Air District, and the regulations that are in place right now are, as far as a push, as far as regulations to what the flies.
I do have two comments, if I may, in response to what Mr. Bockid stated. Number one is the composting of raw manure from a heat standpoint requires it to get to a certain level of temperature. The reason for that is to kill off any E. coli, salmonella, basically any sort of a contaminant. However, what we're experiencing is even if the manure has been handled properly, reaches the proper temperature thresholds, and that, those disease or, or contaminants are eliminated, we still have a manure particle that's landing on the table grapes, and, and so, even though that manure now may be free of any E. coli or salmonella, it's still manure on table grapes, which makes them unmarketable. And then the second comment that I have is, is there, and I'm testing my memory here, but there may have been some resolution of that, of that harvest power situation where they either acquired or worked with the growers to maybe purchase some of the property that was in the affected area, and I'm not sure if that, if that's your recollection as well.
Through the, through the commission here, as far as what was settled in that matter, that, that wasn't necessarily based on the, our, our client. So, the mitigation measures they arrived at were settled with the parties that were in a determination by the clerk.
Okay, thank you.
That brings up a good point. In your meetings, is there any chance of swapping some land?
Yes, absolutely. That was something that we discussed when we had our informal meeting with Seton. We just talked about, you know, listen, you know, why don't you just, you know, consider purchasing a portion of our parcel that is affected, and that never went anywhere because within a, a couple weeks after our meeting with the folks, who, by the way, were very kind, very understanding, very conscientious as far as wanting to help us out and aware of our problem, we got the letter from their attorney basically telling us that they have done everything they're going to do.
Yeah, I've toured, I've toured the Seton facility, I think some of us did two, three years ago, and, and they're very innovative, and they do a lot of things that are very proper.
Yes.
Processing, so I don't understand why you all can't sit down and work through that. The family, and I know some of the family are very, as you said, they're very good people, so, I mean, if it took putting up a, some sort of a shield, not on the fence line, but something in the property where this manure sits, almost like a covered building or half-building, that would prevent anything going across, I mean, it seems like that's the kind of thing everybody ought to be talking about, then they don't have to move anything, they just have to build a structure, and they certainly have the financial capability to do that, from what I've observed. So, that's just an idea, I don't, I'm not saying it's a solution.
We're open to any, yeah, absolutely, we're open to any suggestions. We want to be good neighbors here, but we just are very, very concerned that we're having this ongoing problem.
Well, I think you should all sit down a little more here and get the lawyers out of the way, and sit down and work out some...
I'm sure my clients would be happy if I wasn't involved.
Get a mitigator, mediator, I should say, to work through it, because I think there's some solutions with common sense here, on both sides, both sides. More on their side, perhaps, but...
There, there may be, but again, we're here because this is, they've been composting there since 2017, and they're without a permit, or at least without, without this permit. So, that's, and that's been a very big concern of ours.
Well, I, I still think they can do something with a barrier inside of the fence line that could solve the problem.
Would, would misters help also?
I, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head.
Your dust?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to, we'd have to talk with our agronomic consultant on, on whether or not something like that would work. So, I, I'm sorry, I can't answer that one.
Hector, Hector, you have any comments on this?
Yeah.
Through the chair, I would like, at least, we finish testimony before that response.
Okay.
Right, and, and I was going to actually say that, that, that I was going to wait for a testimony.
Okay.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate the, your time and your consideration, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to come up at this time? Please state your name and, and address, please.
Good morning, my name is Fernando Rios, and I am the Regulatory and Compliance Coordinator for Seton Pistachio of Terabala. Business address is 9370 Road 234 in Terabala, California. As the project, project summary depicts, this is a low-impact, on-farm compost operation that combines our pistachio haul, which is comprised of about 80% moisture, pistachio shell, and ag waste that mix at a 4:1 ratio with dry manure, which creates the perfect soil amendment to our agricultural operations. We, as a company, strongly believe in recycling, reusing, and being environmentally friendly. Seton is pursuing this compost operation to reduce diesel emissions related to the transportation of a haul to decreasing number of dairies. We would transport our pistachio haul miles and miles away for cattle feed, which increased diesel traffic, contributes to smog, and reducing our air quality. Very few dairies are interested in our byproduct. We needed to change this operation because it wasn't the best management practice, so we came up with the idea of creating a low-impact, on-farm compost operation that would benefit us, the environment, and the air quality by recycling and reusing our agricultural waste, creating a valuable soil amendment. We have encountered some opposition from the neighbors to the west of us. We met with them several times to get understanding of what their concerns were, and I believe we could address most of them by doing the following. One, we could, all traffic would be redirected, completely, completely avoid traveling on Road 184 to avoid road dust. All outbound and inbound traffic would occur on Avenue 80. We're going to plant some fast-growing bushes along the fence line to create that extra buffer between the properties, our properties and there. This will help capture some of the dust on those rare occasions that the prevailing winds travel due west. We have demonstrated that our compost was tested for human pathogens, coliform and salmonella. After testing for these human pathogens, it was concluded that the compost is completely safe, completely safe, to use on all crop, where food safety may be an issue. Soil samples show that, that it contains large amounts of both nitrogen and beneficial microbes, free from any dangerous pathogens. Food safety is at the very center of everything we do, and without a doubt, the leader in the pistachio industry, and this facility is no different. We have installed fly traps and fly baits along the fence line and around the reservoir. We plan to double, and if necessary, triple, our efforts to mitigate any fly problems. We installed an eight-foot churning fence with privacy slats as a dust suppression measure and to shield the operation from surrounding properties. We've applied for an encroachment permit and installed asphalt on points of entry for the fire department and for our farm manager, which also serves as a dust suppressant. As a condition of approval, we will provide an all-weather driveway around the perimeter of the site. This will help reduce the dust. We have water trucks on-site that will... We have water trucks on-site that will, on a continuous basis, water the perimeter. We will create an odor impact minimization plan that will provide guidance to on-site personnel in the handling, storage and removal of compost material. This OIMP will be maintained on-site and revised as necessary to reflect any changes in the design or operations of the site. The control and odor and flies will be our top priority. To this end, we will de- deploy every mechanical, biological and chemical tool known to us to ensure success, success in this area. We will remain vigilant and ensure that both odor and flies are mitigated and controlled on a ongoing basis. The San Joaquin Valley Air District is in receipt of our application and the only piece missing is seek clearance from the lead agency. We have thirty days of approval to submit a notice of intent and a technical report to the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. We have a professional working on this, uh, technical, technical report as we speak. We will comply and maintain with all conditions of approval issued by Tulare County, the air board and the water board. This site is appropriately zoned for this type of operation. All standards and special conditions will be fulfilled at all time. It is my responsibility and duty as a regulatory and compliance coordinator that all conditions and reporting are in full compliance. We have been and will always be very accommodating to our neighbors' needs and concerns. I'll be happy to give them my direct number if they have any concerns, they'll call me directly. And after reviewing all conditions of approval, this establishment will not be detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood or to the general welfare of the county. I'll be happy to answer any questions that, uh, pending commission may have.
Were you in the meeting, uh, that Mr. Leath referred to? Uh, were you both, both sides met?
I was in one of them. It was onsite meeting.
How many meetings were there?
Um, to my extent, I was in nine in one meeting.
What, what was discussed in that meeting?
Uh, just like he said, we're talking about how can we resolve this, um.
Could you read off the items you just wrote off to us?
We discussed it, yes.
Did they accept that?
Uh, I believe so.
Offer additional recommendations?
Uh, just to purchase their property, um, but it was just too expensive.
Did you accept those?
No, we did not.
Why?
Uh, again, too expensive and they wanted too much for, for their, uh, grape. We're not in the grape business. We're in the pistachio business. So there was no need, um, and we felt that based on the test results on the soil samples, um, we just, we just couldn't make that, that move.
So you weren't sympathetic to their side as far as their crop versus what you're doing?
Oh, yes, we were very sympathetic and this was why we, uh, wanna reroute the traffic. We wanna do as much as we can to avoid any type of dust going into their property. So we're gonna plant, you know, fast-growing bushes. We're, we're gonna reroute the traffic to avoid one eighty-four. We're, we're doing everything we can to, to resolve their, their concerns.
I, I don't think so, but that's my opinion. Any other questions?
I have a few, but does anybody else wanna go first?
Gonna wait till, uh, uh, you wanna ask questions or?
No, I have questions for Sutton. Um, so. I myself work in the food industry and my day job. And, um, I know that if we so much as get a drop of blood on the food, we have to toss product within a certain range on either side of a contamination. So one of the concerns I have with what I've heard so far is that this is not a right-to-farm type nuisance, but something that has a significant economic impact. And that's a little hard to sweep under the rug or to, to ignore. So I, I, I'm just curious how Sutton is handling that or if you believe as the company, maybe not you personally, but if, is the, does the company believe that that is not, that hundred thousand or fifty thousand or whatever it might be loss is not Sutton responsibility?
No, to some extent it is, and that's why we wanna mitigate as much as we can. Uh, we wanna be good neighbors. I think we always have been good neighbors. Um, and we're willing to do whatever it takes to, to get, to get both parties on the table and agree to some kind of solution. Um, I think, you know, by putting in those high-growing bushes, the, the preventing winds don't typically go west. They usually go southeast in the afternoons. And, and again, we're gonna reroute traffic. We're not gonna travel on one eighty-four, so we're gonna be redirecting everything coming off of one ninety-two and avenue eighty. So we're, uh, if, if there's any other options on the table, we're willing to accept them.
What about, uh, and this is just kinda thinking outside the box a little bit. Uh, I know at the golf course, they have a real high net that keeps the balls from going sideways. Mountain mind goes over there anyway. It doesn't make any difference, but, uh, um, uh, can we put a higher barrier and put some sort of fine netting that obviously is not gonna catch it all, but it'll get a good part of it until, or at least until the trees grow up. The trees aren't gonna stop them, stop it all either, even when they're there. But, um, seems like, uh, an opportunity here to, to at least stop early on dust come across, if, if it'll even work. I don't even know if it'll work.
Well, through the chair, um, as far as, like, like I was saying, the, our, our backdrop here is the air district and the regional water quality control board as far as what they know to be, uh, mitigation measures to reduce nuisances and it's really in the operation of the facility. The conditions as far as the barriers that we're establishing right now or talking about are conditions of approval to limit nuisances in general. I, I did wanna state you have a unique neighbor. This is not your standard typical neighbor and Sutton is in the food processing business and they are finding that what they're processing right now is okay for their crops. But you have a, a white elephant. You have somebody who's in a very unique situation who has a certain certification requirement. I think we have various different requirements. Uh, there are four conditions of approval for harvest power project that, uh, you know, we're kinda adding to. And one of those is higher fencing, um, with the black mesh, uh, to, to eliminate dust and misters. Um, I believe it's fifteen feet tall, uh, that, that was established at that point. Uh, so that's definitely the twin side out there and harvest power is, uh, again, a unique situation. Uh, it's not closing, it's out there, um, and not that many, uh, volume, uh, thousand, uh, ton of grapes. Uh, so, uh, quite, quite a larger facility. And again, it's, you get, not all the neighbors are complaining there. It's one neighbor in a unique situation that they have a required certification. Is Arizona code established to protect everybody in every situation? No. Is it, uh, unfortunate? Yes, but, you know, it's gotta be limited to, to mitigation measures. Sutton would be minimal to, to, to advance, uh, conditions, uh, to, because it's already been some offers of compromise and mandates, you know, really wish. And so considering today, it's not a compromise, but the, uh, mitigation, the composting, uh, measures, uh, should be relative to the nuisance and not necessarily for one party. So, in a unique situation. But I did want Hector to talk a little bit more about, uh, the air district's requirements before we drive to, uh, have more advanced, uh, project features on this project that will give us nuisance, uh, to.
I'd like to point out one thing. The, the parcel that was identified as Sutton was not Sutton. We own the parcel just south of the compost operation. We don't own the parcel to the east. So we own that one. We don't own, uh, the parcel to the east.
Which one do you own?
The outlined parcel and the parcel.
Where the arrow is?
Yes, and just south of that parcel.
Oh, okay.
And just to point out also, there is some table grapes just north of us and we have received no complaints from the owners regarding dust or compost dust. Um, and they've been operating with no issues.
What, what, what Commissioner Diaz said is, is, you know, where, where we were headed. I, I said the same thing about putting a barrier up inside the fence line. And I think he just said, we can't mitigate everything. But, uh, that seems like something that hasn't been tried. It could be a test to see if it works. I mean, it's not a high-cost item, I don't think. You don't have to put a metal building up or anything like that, but you could put a, a mesh barrier of sort, sort. And again, it may not work, uh.
Again, it was, uh, harvest power's advanced, uh, conditions, uh, were sufficient. And again, I mean, we're, we're talking about right-to-farm and let's face it, a large portion of our agriculture in this county is fertilized with straight manure on the ground a few times. So they have the same problem, you know, this was a cornfield, alfalfa field, whatever, that in order of mixing this way, we thought it's the same problem. Here it's actually composted. So, I mean, as far as the heat protection and everything else, we're so expect. But, uh, again, our, our, and our, our police powers and our, especially the stromax to try to make sure that this project that's with the zones, uh, we can provide, um, a more advanced management. So, I think it would be, uh, if the applicant is willing to, to do those, uh, agriculture would be easier to set, but, uh, I think at the same time, it's within our harvest power's due to request those.
Is this, um, because there's potentially some, this, and this is for Aaron, um, but is there this the moment where we say, would you like more time to talk to each other, um, rather than us mandate something?
Well, we, uh, we, we, the staff has suggested that. I believe that, uh, Sutton Farms believes that, uh, proof of court is the best, uh, way to receive. And they have as much ability to appeal any conditions as the opposition has to appeal the project. So, uh, one way or the other. So, we suggest that, I think we have suggested that, but that, that would be.
My, um, I, I will suggest that then. Um, we, somebody else here might make a different motion, um, but what I'd like to suggest to Sutton, um, because it seems to me from what I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, I have been wrong before, um, but what I'm hearing is that you guys are, meaning, uh, I'm mispronouncing your client's name, Kovacevic and Sutton are perhaps talking around each other on a couple of different points? And it's almost like you maybe don't wanna look at each other when you're talking, so you don't hear everything. I don't know if I explained that properly, but.
I understand.
What, what I would like to see is that if you will talk to each other again. You don't have to promise anything, just hear each other out and put everything on the table that you can. Because it's in the right-to-farm, in my understanding, the nuisances are acceptable, but at what point does a nuisance become a burden? That's what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to turn around in my mind. So ideally Sutton and Kovacevic, and apologies for the mispronunciation on either one, would come up with a solution and then we can accept that.
Mr. Guerrero.
Yeah.
Do you have any recommendations for someone that could sit in a meeting like this that understands airflow and vectors and all of the other nonsense?
Through the chair, uh, before we get into a specific circumstance, I'd like to, uh, we, we, our, our plan to discuss.
We can close it down. Yeah, we can do that later.
Is there any, there might be more people?
We'll ask. We'll ask. Any other comments, sir?
No, we're just, you know, Sutton is willing to work things out. We, we are willing to go above and beyond like we always do. And I hope, you know, it goes well today and, and if it doesn't, we'll, I'm sure we'll work it out.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who would like to come up, state your name and address, please?
Good morning. Ian Bocky, Bocky Ag, uh, chief operations officer, uh, nine zero six, North Bullinger. Uh, I'm also the, uh, officer in charge of, uh, the operations out here on this plot, uh, during the composting, um.
You're for Sutton? You work for Sutton?
I do, I do, uh, advisement and, uh, operations out there. I'm not on payroll for Sutton. So I'm a third-party entity. Is that understood?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, with that being said, uh, I do, uh, operate, own equipment, uh, water trucks as to say. Uh, I'd like to address some of the issues that, uh, I apologize. That gentleman brought up, uh, dust control. I was unaware of trucks. I don't know what pictures he has of the trucks that were uncovered that seemed to be a, a minor issue or a major issue. One of the major issues, um, so I'm unaware of that. I would love to address that issue on whose trucks they were. Why were they uncovered, all that. I'm, I'm fully, uh, on board with covering those trucks, uh, if they are my trucks. That will be handled, uh, without a reasonable doubt. All my inbound operations, uh, as, uh, Mr. Rios said, are using alternate routes off of one eighty-four, so we're not traveling in front of their property. Uh, and avoiding their property at, uh, all costs. So that means cutting through other properties that Sutton owns as well. Uh, about the, the windrow in general, uh, I have a windrow turner and, uh, factory spec has that windrow turner at a seven-foot height tunnel and an eight-foot fence and I'm a mathematician and that's a one-foot difference. I don't know how you, uh, get higher than that. Uh, you could talk to the factory about that, factory spec and see what they have to say. Uh, White Deer, Texas is the manufacturer. Uh, but, you know, like I said, I wish I had a nine-foot, ten-foot turner and you get a lot more material in there, but I don't. Dust control measures, I'm on top of it. I do my best. Uh, if I hear a complaint, I do my best to take care of that plain, complaint with dust issues. Uh, that's a burden, uh, you know, not just in, uh, table grapes, uh, you know, you, you got a burden in almonds. You got a bug problem with almonds. You got a, uh, fruit, uh, stone fruit.
Complaints? Who complains to you when there's a dust issue?
I'll get a, I'll get a call from, uh, Sutton facilities, which they will go through if there is a dust issue. I, I do my best, like I said, to stay on top of that. I don't wanna hear a complaint because that means I wasn't staying on top of it, right? You know, if you, if you hear about it, then it's already too late type deal. That's, that's the kind of operation I like to run.
So it's coming from the vineyard folks that Sutton to you? Is that the way it's?
Like I said, uh, I can't pinpoint anything. Things happen fast, but I like to stay on top of things as much as possible. I also talk to the foreman. Like we say, I, I, I have a really good relationship with the foreman over there on the, uh, north side of us, uh, making sure that, uh, he's taken care of the best, best way. Uh, making sure that, hey, talking to him whenever I get the opportunity to or whenever we're running operations in and out, uh, to make sure that he's taken care of and, uh, he does the same for me as well. They have a lot of, uh, manual labor out there. So a lot of their personal vehicles get parked in our roadways, which hinder my operations and my extremely, uh, aggressive equipment to get through in in and out. So I do, uh, do have a very good relationship with them and, uh, they don't seem to mind anything that goes on and I don't seem to mind, uh, them parking in our area from time to time.
Do you have a relationship with the Kovacevic, uh, five farms?
No, no, I have no relationship.
Have they ever come over and talked with you?
No. I'm, I'm, uh, you know, I'm not, uh, advertising, so I don't know.
Oh, you weren't in on the meetings between Sutton and the other?
No, sir, I was not. Uh, like I said, I'm a third-party entity in charge of operations out there. Uh, I'm just here to give facts and, and, and go from there. And I do my own composting operation as well, so this is not my first, uh, first time. I deal, like I said, going back to the dust control issues, I have almonds all around my, um, my compost facility. Pistachios around my composting facility. I have truck traffic, major truck traffic going through. And dust is a, uh, issue in the valley in general. Hardened services fix those issues. Water trucks fix those issues. Oil and roads fix those issues. And that's just, I mean, that's fact. Uh, the, the, the dust on, uh, composting, uh, is, is very minute due to the fact of windrow composting requires things. You need carbon, which is your material. You need water and you need oxygen. So if I, if I'm throwing water in there, which fixes most dust issues, then, uh, I don't, I don't see an issue there. You know, I mean, that dust is mitigated. I'm not saying there's no dust, but most of the time the dust is mitigated to a reasonable level, uh, when you are composting. Uh, dry manure-wise, I'd love to address those issues with the, uh, covered and uncovered trucks. Um, I, I have no problem addressing those issues whatsoever on an operational standpoint for that inbound whatsoever.
Oh, you were never asked for, to provide input to this particular, uh, issue between Sutton and, uh?
Can you, can you state that one more time? I didn't hear you.
You, you were never asked to provide any input of any type to this particular issue we're discussing here in terms of the, uh, fly specs and the, uh, the dust and such?
No, sir. I'm just, I'm just here as the third-party entity, uh, I think. I think Seton's doing an amazing job out there, especially with the fly control. They have, they have fly traps everywhere out there, boots on the ground wise. I mean, I don't know if you've been out there, but literally they have fly traps out there on every other fence post, it seems as if, all over their pistachio trees, they have them out there trying to get a solid barrier and control on the fly issue and periodically put fly bait out and as an organic measure in the fly control, they also use the wasps to kill the larvae of the fly, and that is a phenomenal tool. And I use that personally as well.
Any questions?
Just a kind of a question, kind of a comment. Pistachios are holed, right? They have holes?
I'm not a farmer, ma'am.
Okay, so table grapes, most people don't peel before putting in their mouth.
Correct.
So that's what I'm wrapping my head around right now. What I don't know, because I have not analyzed the property or anything like that or seen a technical report, is, are, is what is happening with Kovacevic?
Kovakovic.
How to say that again?
Kovakovic.
Kovakovic. Is what is happening there the way it is because of Seton's recent, fairly recent operation? Or is that something that would happen anyway without the manure?
In regards to the fly issue is what you-
The fly issue, economic losses and so on?
Uh, I'm, once again, I'm not a farmer. I do not own any farmland. I do not farm anything. I'm just here to state the facts and pretty much prevailing winds are, what are they, southeast out there, right? And that property's west. So I can't say otherwise. I'm not an economist. I wish I could give you a better answer, but-
One more question then for you is, do you, I'm looking at the property, so I'm kind of talking to it, but I'm looking at the property. Since you weren't part of the conversation before, do you think you need to be part of a conversation before?
I'm more than happy to attend any meetings.
All right.
Who asked you to return, to attend today?
I've been going back and forth with Mr. Rios throughout this process to ensure that he has all my knowledge of this permitting process and all the knowledge of the operational standpoint. Mr. Rios is not in charge of operations out there. He has a bigger, better job to deal with, and this is my job. Everybody has a part to play, and I deal with the operation standpoint of making the Any further questions for me?
Thank, thank, thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I show him the photo that's part of the packet?
I'll just show you.
Please state your name and address, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, David Leith again.
One more, counsel?
I just wanted to show him the photo. He said he hadn't seen it of the dust.
Of the trucks.
Of the truck. That's the uncovered truck with the dust. This is, this is tab exhibit five, tabs eight, and nine.
We're being recorded, so-
Yes, David Leith, the attorney for Kovakovic Five Farms.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to show him.
All right.
Thank you very much for that.
May I address that photo? That, no, you're fine. I saw it. That's, that's compost in the back of that truck headed off to an orchard.
That's part of what, it's what?
It's compost coming out of that truck. So if it was leaving and exiting, it's all outbound, it's not inbound. Outbound is only compost. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public would like to speak at this time? If not, I'm closing public testimony at this time. Any comments from staff?
Yes, we'd like to take a couple minutes, right, to talk to the applicant. If you can jump out.
All right. You need five minutes, ten minutes?
A cookie.
Five minutes?
Great.
All right, we will adjourn our session for five minutes. We should all be back here at ten twenty.
To construct, as they call it, which is a part of the permit operating component for them to do the composting. I spoke with the Valley Air District last week, and they're waiting on us because we're doing the sequel, we're doing the land entitlement. They're well aware that they have to follow the rules and regulations, and, and just to let you know that the Regulation Eight, the Fugitive Dust Control Rules, don't require permit. They're prohibitive in nature, but the operation, the composting facility does, and one of the conditions that they're going to have in there is going to be must comply with Regulation Eight, in addition to all the other composting things that they do, you know, for, for their role. One of them that Mr. Bock brought up accurately is the certain heat that they have to have a temperature so they could cure the, and then the turning of it. That process has to have a certain temperature, and that temperature will easily kill any larvae. So where the flies are coming from, I don't know. Not likely from the composting operation because of the temperature. Again, it kills the larvae. Will it get them all? I don't know, but at the same time, too, they indicated they have traps out there and they have wasps out there, so it's a constant battle. We're not going to dispute that. Regarding the, the water regularly, watering regularly of the unpaved roads, they got to do it. You know, that's, that's going to be under authority to construct, and that's part of the Regulation Eight. In Regulation Eight, and I'll say we, because again, I worked for the Valley Air District for a dozen years, we said, you're not really farming anymore, now you're processing. You've turned it in from a harvest operation into a process operation, so you got to control the unpaved areas, which include storage areas, loading areas, which include any piles they may have out there, which includes, you know, the unpaved roads. And it sounds like they're doing it. There's a variety of techniques, including even slowing down. So slowing down, watering it, paving it, whatever they do, some kind of dust suppressant, it sounds like they're going to do it, and the Air District will have them do it. The other thing to regard in the Air District is that, you know, when, when, they're going to be monitored, and, and anybody can report an issue, but their first and foremost is take care of people. You know, and if some of that dust happens to be a nuisance and intrudes upon anything, you know, their primary concern is taking care of people's health. So, you know, unfortunately, dust travels, that's the nature of all of our farming operations around here. But it seems to me, from the description that Mr. Rios indicated, how they're going to change the, and I forget the other young gentleman, the compost guy, but it's, it sounds like they're going to change a lot of stuff that should be able to reduce emissions drift, if you will, going to the west. So with that, you know, I, I think when everything, literally the dust is settled, that they should be able to have some pretty good control techniques out there that should be able to relieve the dust to Mr. Leach's satisfaction and his clients.
Mr. Chair, may I make a comment? Any other comments? Yes.
Ed.
You didn't hear me, did you? Okay. Mr. Guerrero, I agree with all that, and we're talking about health and safety, but I think the biggest issue right here isn't exactly health and safety, it's perception at the market. These table grapes are not washed, they're not cleaned, they're just put right into the pack, cartons, and they're delivered right to the store. Now, they go in there, and even though this dust, whether it's compost dust, manure dust, just dirt, road dust, sitting on the grapes is a perception that I know I'm not going to buy that grape. And whether it's healthy for you or not isn't the issue. It's, it's whether it can be sold, and, and there is going to be, that's where the economic hardship comes. So I'm, I'm, I'm on board with all these things here. I think we need to do a little bit more to keep the dust off these things, and- Well, it's up to Mr. Guerrero's point. It's, the concern is for the health and safety of the humankind here, but if you have a contaminated grape and someone eats it, that sort of falls in the same category. So I'm not saying that you get sick and die from this, but it also can affect the product that someone consumes. That is the health and safety of someone that, and it may not be in the dust that shows up, it may be delayed in the product that goes out into the marketplace. So I heard spot, fly specs and other things like that that's contaminating that product.
Well, through the chair, this is Erin Bock, the planning director for Larry County. I just wanted to state, as we discussed many times before, under our zoning, under the Californiaty and Robin Hood Quality Act, the limits of our review are as to regulations in place. So sequels are addressed fully with this project. As far as our zoning code, as far as the use permits, we are allowed to condition projects to limit the nuisances so long as it signifies a zone. We are talking about agricultural zoning. So to say this is a new use, right? It is, but does it still, with our conditions of approval, fit agricultural zoning? So I would go back to right to farm, and yes, they are adding newer where they might not really exist, but any farmer could add newer to their property where it doesn't exist. So as I said before, this is in unique circumstances, and I think it's stated in the record that there are other table grapes to the north that are not affected by this. So as far as-
But that's because of the northwest to southeast airflow.
And again-
That's what I picked up.
Yes, the, this, the subject matter of the discussions and the testimony aren't a part of the quasi-judicial nature of a hearing on the use permit that we have legislated today, but the, the facts are, I would think, a little bit in controversy, and it's within your judgment to say, in the record, which direction it's coming in, if it affects one property over another, but again, you get into economic valuations, and this staff and this commission and the board supervisors has consistently said, speculation on valuation of land and the impacts of our provenance as to the valuation, and are speculative. There is nothing entered into the record to even say, besides testimony, to actually say that's the actual economic impact. And without more evidence, it's a little bit tough to say what the real issues are as far as evaluations. I've heard that they've tried to compromise, and I've heard there's potential interjection of the price. Again, speculative matters that are outside our purview, we're just looking at, does this project fit the agricultural zoning that's surrounding it? And yes, we have a unique circumstance. So we just wanted to have these statements made to, for the administrative record, as we did before, on the staff's part. Nonetheless, we are recommending that we continue this matter to June, what's the next date?
Twelve. June twelfth is our next date.
And where's that meeting?
June twelfth. Visalia City.
West Avenue.
And so it's date certain, so this would not be, we don't provide, uh, policy, and that's our recommendation at this time.
Yeah, we've hammered this one enough today. I'd move to take staff's recommendation to continue, to continue to date certain. I'll second. We'll roll call.
Mick Elroy?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
So moved. We pick this up again on June twelfth at Visalia City Hall Conference Room.
Council chambers.
Pardon?
I thought, the council chambers.
Council chamber. Moving on to item four C. Special use permit number PSP eighteen dash zero eight three Bahadur Singh. Category exemption and special use permit number PSP eighteen dash zero eight three, permit to authorize an agricultural service establishment trucking on a fifteen-acre portion of a nineteen point seven two acre parcel located in the A1 agricultural zone. The site is located on the south side of Avenue three ninety-six, approximately twelve hundred feet east of Mendocino Avenue, three-quarter mile northeast of the State Route ninety-nine, eighteen, Eighteenth Avenue interchange, and one-quarter mile south of State Route two oh one, Road sixteen intersection inside the county adopted city of Kingsburg Urban Development Boundary. And our contact this morning is Ms. April Hill. Good morning, April.
Morning Chairman Millies and Commissioners. April Hill, Planner Three.
Do this one?
Pardon?
Thought we did this one.
Through, through the chair, yes, this is returning to you, your suggestion, and went through all the factors that got it back to you before, but April.
This current use permit application and the previous zone change were filed in response to a June nineteen, two thousand seventeen code violation for operating a trucking business in the A1 agricultural zone without an approved use permit. A two-year term is due to city concerns about the business type in the area. It will allow the county and the city to finish a specific plan for the area that's of the county that's within a, within the city UDB.
Through the chair, area.
Area, thank you.
I like the city so highly.
Property is located on the south side of Avenue three ninety-six, near State Route ninety-nine interchange with Eighteenth Avenue. The county's land use designation right now is mixed use until a specific plan is adopted. As you recall, the Hash subdivision was approved in June two thousand eighteen for one hundred ninety-two residential lots, one hundred and seventy-seven lots of those, of those lots in Tulare County. Next door to the west of the site, subject site, Van Cleve Concrete Manufacturing Plant was approved in September of two thousand sixteen. City expressed concerns about traffic, road conditions, noise, and land use conflicts, and the site plan addresses these issues. Conditions of approval are included for the applicant to sign a developer agreement with the county to donate land for a park, to make frontage improvements, and to pay fifty thousand dollars to improve part of Avenue one, three seventy-six. Caltrans calculated the impact of truck trips on the Eighteenth Avenue interchange. Have a equitable fair share mitigation amount of six thousand two twenty-nine. They'll have to enter into an agreement with Caltrans for traffic mitigation. Project is consistent with other uses in the neighborhood. The A1 zone is a transitional zone that allows intensive non-ag uses, and the ag service tracking, trucking businesses require use permit. The applicant estimates sixty, sixty percent of the truckloads are ag products in refrigerated Ariel's showing the neighborhood. The building on the site, on the subject site to the, by three ninety-six is a house that was converted to a dispatch office. Nearest rural residence, school, and Hash subdivision are five hundred feet north of the proposed repair facility. Further west are a building contractor, mini storage, RV storage, feed manufacturer, and a church on the other side. Van Cleve has begun construction and donated land to be used for parking for school sporting The previously proposed zone change was replaced by the use permit and a later specific plan. Applicant proposes building a eighty-foot by one hundred and twenty-foot metal building for repairing company trucks. The repair facility would be four hundred feet south of Avenue three ninety-six. Truck yard would be screened from public by landscaping. They'll be parking fifteen trucks and fifteen trailers. Land to be donated to the city for a park was initially considered at five acres, still being negotiated with the city in exchange for fifty thousand dollars in road improvement There's six employees working seven AM to three PM. There's six employees working seven AM to three PM. Estimated-
Uh, fifty, uh, thirty thousand?
Five thou- fifty thousand?
Sorry.
Okay. Is it K or is it M? Okay. Uh, conditions of approval? Yeah. Conditions of approval, building permits to convert the house to an office, including ADA requirements, a drive approach with encroachment permits, water for fire suppression, limit of fifteen acres with parking for fifteen trucks and fifteen trailers. This is the original site plan for the zone change from the November two thousand seventeen application, reduced the scope of the plan after feedback from the city. Uh, City of Kingsburg commented, uh, had concerns about the traffic impacts. That's been resolved to fifteen truck trips a day, twelve employee vehicle trips a day. They've asked that trucks not enter or exit via Eighteenth Avenue, uh, during school years, so that they must turn right onto Avenue three ninety-six to road, uh, school hours, I'm sorry, drop off and pickup hours, seven thirty, eight thirty AM, one, three PM. Instead, the trucks must turn right onto Avenue three ninety-six to Road sixteen and go north to State Route two oh one. The applicant is responsible for turning lane and frontage improvements. They've already done a turning lane, um, with a gravel surface. They are to, uh, install curb gutter and sidewalk improvements and, uh, and pay traffic mitigation fees to Caltrans. We anticipate that the county will be able to complete a specific plan for the area in two years after application, and the applicant must sign a developer agreement with the county before recording the resolution. The developer agreement states that the use permit approval will resolve the code violation, will take about two years to complete the plan, donate between three to five acres to the city for a park before recording, have to pay the city for curb gutter and sidewalk work, it'll be a one-time fifty thousand dollar road impact fee, and the area plan is proposed to rezone the property to M one MU, which is light manufacturing mixed use. If they're rezoned, it would not require an ag conservation easement. Public notice for this special use permit was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Sun Gazette with a ten-day public comment period. Environmental Planning Chief Planner has approved the categorical exemption from California Environmental Quality Act under section one five zero six one B three, the general rule. The project does not have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment, therefore is not subject to SEQA. It's not in an environmentally sensitive area and must comply with state and local regulations. That is staff's report. Um, unfortunately, the, the applicant, Mr. Singh, is not able to be here due to a funeral up north. His daughter, uh, Taryn Carr, is, uh, in the audience, but, um, wishes not to comment at this time.
So, I'm still a little bit confused. Why are we here?
Uh, through, through the chair, I'll, I'll try to answer that question as soon as possible. Um, originally when we were, uh, contemplating this project, it originally meant as a use permit, and, uh, I think we just wanted to do as much economic development as possible, uh, to increase our sales tax revenue, and, uh, that's probably our best bet to take for services and improvements in the future. But, uh, due to some of the concerns from the city, uh, we, uh, re- relooked at the zoning because that would, uh, potentially add, um, many more traffic trips to this area, and, uh, as we can understand, uh, a great city like Kingsburg, uh, we want to have some say over what's occurring, uh, in this, uh, boundaries, uh, especially in Tulare County. So, uh, it's within the area of development boundary, so, so there are some limitations as well, we can allow them out a lot, but a, a use permit, uh, as originally intended would work because, as I was just saying, the conditions of approval that we complete on a use permit are broader than we can, uh, put on a rezone to piece of property, so it's a development agreement in place, and that could also, the city would not be satisfied with a rezone because that would increase the potential for SEQA, and, uh, need for greater SEQA analysis, so it's just, uh, cost of this project, uh, so there's a lot of compromises floating around right now, uh, including with, uh, the hash project itself as far as the road improvements on, on current. Uh, there's, uh, as far as the developer agreement, uh, it's easier done through a use permit than a development agreement, which requires ordinance, can be done through the zoning. So this is the, uh, best possible scenario right now for all parties, uh, and including, uh, now, you know, some, uh, that, uh, we do a use permit instead of, uh, a rezone.
What did we do before? Wasn't it a use permit before?
Uh, the one that started, originally started, it's part of a rezone, and we continued, uh, I mean, we did data on certain, uh, the rezone to come back to now a use permit. Um, so I guess we can say that the, uh, the rezone ceased to exist at this time and took another form through, and, uh, much, uh, more cost efficient form through the area plan. So that, that, that rezone's wrong, like, I guess, this is, uh, if you look at it, I guess that, like, this is a new project.
So we didn't complete the use permit on the last one? Is that what you're telling me? Oh, okay, I thought we had done it.
It's a new project, so this is what's here.
Because it seemed like there was a lot of discussion about, about landscape and setback and entrance, and I thought we had done all that, but we never, we never-
This is, this is a formalization of that discussion, and, uh, many, many iterations later, and, uh, like I said, there's a lot of moving parts right now. Um, the, the city does want the improvements on current done, uh, now rather than later because the developers out there, and so as, uh, compromises, the developer agreement right now, we're looking at, uh, as you can see in that map, the donation of five acres to the city for a park, um, which is a pretty good amount. That the applicant's willing to give a family about fifty thousand dollars on that, for load improvements, uh, so he's, he's wanting to concede those so that the city is, uh, satisfied, uh, throughout this process. So, but we'll work that out through the developer agreement. It won't have to be committed until we report these documents. Right now, it's in the conditions of the project. I think the city is appreciating.
I guess so. They rolled the poor guy in the ditch, man.
Well, uh, the city, the city was, uh, here to, to discuss any of those-
I guess. Then he come out all right.
I think there was an issue with the subdivision there too.
Yeah, that was another, another story. Uh, any questions from any of my fellow commissioners? This is a, an old story.
My first-
fought this fight already, I don't know. Uh, any, any comments? Uh, I'll, at this time, I will, uh, this is a public hearing, I'll open the testimony to the public at this time. Anyone who would like to come up and speak on behalf of or an opposed to this project, uh, please come up and state your name and address. Anyone? Anyone? Okay, if not, I will close this testimony, public testimony at this time, and, uh, look to my fellow commissioners for comments and/or emotion. Well, I tell you what, this poor guy, he's been through the wringer here. Let's not beat him up anymore. I'll make a motion to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and the state's SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen, California Code Regulation, section one five zero six one, B three, the general rule, and section one five three zero three, new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved special use permit number PSP eighteen dash zero eight three.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mick Alroy?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item four D. Ordinance Amendment Number P Z C nineteen dash zero one zero. Resource Management Agency Tulare County Board of Supervisors, common sense exception, general rule, and an ordinance amending section fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen of chapter three of ordinance number three fifty-two, the zoning ordinance of Tulare County pertaining to sewage, sludge, and appeals. Contact is Ms. Dana Metlin. Good morning again.
Good morning again. Uh, this request is for an ordinance amending sections fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen of chapter three of ordinance number three fifty-two pertaining to sewage, sludge, and appeals. And the applicant is, uh, RMA, I guess, on behalf of the B O S. The locations would affect everyone countywide, and the hearing notification was in the Visalia Times Delta on May tenth, two thousand nineteen. So these are text amendments only, and the section fifteen A nine pertains to the application of EQ compost, which would no longer require a special use permit. And, you know, this has been gone over for many months in APAC with, uh, representatives of composting facilities, and the EQ is simply a exceptional quality compost from biosolids. Section sixteen D two pertains to Director Decision Appeals Regarding Minor Deviations that will now be heard by the Planning Commission instead of the Board of Supervisors. Section sixteen two D two F pertains to Director Decision Appeals in General that will now be heard by the Planning Commission instead of the Board of Supervisors. And section eighteen B and section eighteen, paragraph nine, pertain to the establishment of a hear, of hearing officers and a local appeals board in place of the Board of Supervisors regarding certain appeals only. And those were listed in the agenda item. Those appeals would be for transient occupancy taxes, code violation fines, solid waste ordinance violations, animal control ordinance violations, business licenses, general nuisance and code violation cases, and substandard housing nuisance, nuisance violations. And so that's the conclusion of this presentation, and here is our recommendation that you approve the common sense exemption from SEQA and recommend the Board of Supervisors approve the ordinance amendments.
All right.
So we can get a raise? We're doing our work now?
Excellent.
It's a, uh-
For the record, I believe that the board's actually heard a administrative determination appeal, and it's in the seventy years I've been involved in, uh, decisions like this by this point.
Yeah, we do all that anyway, right? All that one.
Well, right now, if I had administrative decision, uh, appeal with the, uh, this gives me the opportunity to get it to the conference, so the board's important to talk to me.
This is a- I was okay with the administrator going in, if he makes it, you know? I trust him. As being a public hearing, I'm opening this testimony to the public for comment for or against anyone in the public out there. April, want to testify? Now I close public testimony at this time. Look for a recommendation from my fellow commissioners on a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve a common sense general rule exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the state, was that the right one? Yeah. And the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen, California Code of Regulations, section fifteen zero six one B three pertaining to SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to SEQA, and recommend the Board of Supervisors approve the ordinance amended sections fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen of ordinance number three five two, chapter three, the zoning ordinance of Tulare County.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mick Alroy?
Yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
So moved, thank you very much. Moving on to item five, Director's Report. Planning Director Update.
Yes, uh, the chair there, Bob, Planning Director, uh, at first, a, uh, report to the commission, we have just, uh, put on the street, uh, all three community councils we've been working on, I know, Plan New in Woodville, and, uh, next to the heroic efforts of the SEQA Division, they've, uh, been able to do so, um, and we did have a last minute change because there is the labor camp next to the, to, to, in, so that's been, it's also, uh, quite a, you know, people have been doing that as a separate project, so, uh, staff has done a great effort over the last two months, uh, to bring that to place so that we can leave the plant with this sludge in here, um, or at least get as close to it as possible. So it's quite, quite a, quite an effort, and we really appreciate that. Uh, we, yesterday just heard, uh, for the first time, it's, uh, Community Facilities District, uh, hearing, uh, established the goals and policies for the county as a whole, and that was, uh, for the hash project, um, they are actually breaking the ground, and we are issuing model, uh, permits, uh, as we speak, so they're gonna, seven key, uh, homes gonna go forward, uh, a, a little bit ahead of their own anticipated schedule, and we've been working pretty hard with, uh, the, uh, the developers in general to get as many, uh, homes built, uh, while the market's, market's good. And, uh, so, yes, uh, we also did, uh, Sequoia Gateway, uh, Development Agreement, uh, first reading, uh, because like I said, development agreements require them to be approved by ordinance, we did the first, uh, reading yesterday as well, so it was, uh, kind of landmark day for Tulare County to have these new financing mechanisms being put in place on large scale projects, and hopefully, as we've said before, a template for, for future projects. I do want to thank, uh, Matt, again, for his efforts in, in helping with both of those, uh, financing mechanisms, uh, and if the county can be, be more of those in the future. Uh, as stated by Commissioner Vanderpoort, it's also the opportunity to get, uh, land, uh, homeowners, I know, just to agree to, um, the community facilities, districts assessments, uh, basically, especially the taxes, sorry, uh, taxes, taxes, do improvements in these communities, and that might be a actually better option than doing assessments, uh, road maintenance and other infrastructure, uh, problems could be avoided, so, uh, like I said, it's landmark day and, uh, we weren't any problems, so, uh, Sequoia Gateway is moving forward at, at full speed. Both those projects are at the final half stage, and, uh, again, I'd like to thank your staff, uh, and, uh, keep that, uh, uh, right up to speed, uh, to work on. So, I just, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'll turn over to Bob, which-
Uh, unless you have any questions for me, yeah, no comments, since, uh, I'd have to make it back for a meeting.
I just want to make one more comment on economic development front. Uh, Mr. Washington's at ICSE this week, so hopefully he comes back with a big book of future work.
Sure you will. I'm sure that's where Mr. One Night Jason as well, so, I was looking forward to everything we had.
Outed.
Um, I wanted to make a request before we adjourn. Um, we, a year ago, we met out on the site of the com- the site of the Comfort Inn in Thrivers, and we had an agreement with the county and environmental health attended, and we were supposed to get a, uh, a mitigation project completed on a failed, uh, leach area situation, you know, a leach field, and there was a agreement in place to extend the leach field and install new monitoring equipment. Could we get an update on that and what, how that's going, and has the county inspected the progress on that?
Yes, uh, through the chair, we can definitely return next time with an update and contact.
Okay.
Environmental...
I'd appreciate that. Thanks.
Any other comments? If not, uh, we will adjourn this session to June twelfth, nine AM, Visalia City Hall, City Council Chambers, seven oh seven West, uh, Sequoia Avenue, Visalia, California.